Go through the next couple of days. What do you think, Ray?
Next change actually starting to move in on a gusty breeze this morning. The chillier temperatures in yesterday, most of us hovering near 60. I don't think we see 60 degrees come back for the next couple of days, but maybe by the end of the week. Clouds in, gusty winds this morning. I think mainly cloudy today. May actually see temperatures fall a few degrees into the low 40s. Overnight tonight will finally clear. High pressure will come on in, will fall back to the colder mid 20s. Clouds and sun on Wednesday, 44, 20s again Wednesday night. Thursday mostly sunny and slightly milder into the low 50s. And then Friday with more sun than clouds will go upper 50s to near 60 degrees. I'm meteorologist Ray Stigig, The Weather Channel on WCLU, your home for local.
Thank you, Ray. Let's look at the current conditions. The, let me get the current conditions where I want to show you what we have here. We have atmospheric pressure that is down at 29.79. High pressure has really moved out of the neighborhood and so we're going to be bottoming out here with the low pressure over the next couple of days. The humidity is at a very dry 60 or 58% humidity, 58% humidity. Now, the winds on a regular basis are eight miles an hour. Some of those blustery gusts from overnight, we maxed out at 31 miles an hour, making for the howling evening last night. And then two tenths of an inch of rain is what we got yesterday, .20. Our temperature reading is 44 degrees at WCLU live from the newsroom this morning. Here is WCLU's director, Angela Briggs. Good morning, Angela.
Good morning, Henry. Less than five hours after releasing pictures of the suspects wanted in connection with the weekend theft, they have been found. Barron County Sheriff's Deputy Mike Houchen said they had located two suspects. Charges are expected to be filed. The theft occurred Sunday afternoon at Barron River Beverages. Still shots taken from the store's video surveillance showed two older women at the counter. The pair allegedly left the store in a white four-door SUV. The sheriff's office has not released details in regard to the theft. Clearing committee, the Glasgow City Council will now vote on whether or not to allow the Barron River District Health Department to offer a needle exchange program. The Public Safety Committee had their meeting prior to the council's last night to discuss the measure. And they gave their unanimous decision to the council. Here's council member Greg Harris.
After some discussion, we had a unanimous vote to recommend it to the council. We felt like the potential benefits outweighed the potential cost. And so we'll see what the council thinks here in a couple of weeks.
The program will be run and funded by the Barron River District Health Department. Inviting them to the meeting, Member Wendell Honeycutt said they also wanted to make sure they had the blessing of local law enforcement agencies and first responders before they move forward on the measure.
I think we wanted to do what's right for the people of the community. We don't want to waste an opportunity to save someone from drug addiction and possibly provide them with an extra avenue to seek counseling.
Anyone participating in the program is required to meet with the representative from the health department before the exchange. It's a one-to-one exchange only allowed once a week. They're offering information on treatment options, disease prevention, and disease treatment. The access to counseling was a key part to Honeycutt's support.
Counseling is what will save a person's life to where they can rejoin society as a truly functioning member.
Already approved by the Barron Fiscal Court, it's now in the hands of the city council who will vote on the measure at their next meeting. The council did approve economic development incentives for federal mogul and links labeling. Each are now eligible to retain 1% of the one and a half occupational license fee. Considering their expansion will create at least 25 new jobs, federal mogul will also receive a forgivable $100,000 loan from the Glasgow Economic Development Loan Fund. Mayor Dick Doty noted the hard work of the Department of Public Works as well as emergency responders in the recent weather storm or the snowstorm that we had here in Glasgow. If you totaled the distance they spent clearing roads, it would have been the same as traveling every street in the city 10 times. The council also approved several reappointments. Wendell Honeycutt and Dr. Kylan Kaiser are back on the ambulance board. Summer Harper, Betty Herbert, and Holly Alexander will continue to serve on the Plaza Theater Board. Melba Richardson and Peggy Bates reappointed to the Renaissance Steering Committee. Bill Anderson and Nancy Poyner will begin another term on the code enforcement board. Sean Hale will fill the unexpired term of Betty Bailey on the code enforcement board. Chair Brad Grove said the finance committee wants the Glasgow Electric Plant Board to open up the bidding process for an auditor. Once proposals are received, the finance committee will review them and make a recommendation to the entire council. In September of last year, the Kentucky Wired project prompted the city council to pass a resolution to advertise for bids for an internet franchise. No bids came in and since then, city attorney Rich Alexander has had several conversations, he said, with the folks in Frankfurt. Considered a sovereign entity, the Commonwealth said they weren't required to have a franchise and they cited court cases as backup. Alexander has spoken with them several times again and while the memorandum of understanding will not technically consider them a franchise, he ensured the city council they will get the same protections. The Glasgow Fire Department welcomed three new firefighters last night. Mayor Dick Doty swore in Bryant Blodgett, James Edge, and Todd Napier. As has been tradition at the Glasgow Fire Department, one of the first pieces of equipment given to any rookie is their rope. They're required to keep it with them at all times and they wear it around their waist. Now, the ability to tie a secure knot and the right knot at the scene of a fire or other emergency can mean the difference in someone getting hurt or not. And they must be tied accurately and securely and perfectly every single time regardless of what's going on as a way to build this skill while they're in training anytime, anywhere, and for any or no reason at all. Any rookie can be asked to tie any knot. This skill Chief Brian Marr explained was why the trio had the ropes around their waist. Since they are now officially firefighters, they turn those ropes back in. The city will also file for a FEMA grant for the fire department for self-contained breathing apparatuses. How important are these breathing apparatuses to firefighters? Here is Chief Brian Marr.
The most important because it protects not only in the here and now with the temperature and the smoke and the carbon monoxide, but also 20 years from now to prevent lung cancers, all those cancers that a firefighter could get from smoke during a fire.
Now, there are certain standards set out by OSHA in regard to these breathing apparatuses and this purchase will ensure the department can remain in compliance with regulations. But it's also about the safety of firefighters because smoke inhalation can be deadly.
Most people that die in a structural fire do not die from burns or collapse. They actually die from smoke inhalation and firefighters are exactly the same as every other human being in the world. That smoke knocks us out just like it does them.
The grant will ask for funding for 25 of these self-contained breathing apparatuses. If the funds are received, the local share amount will be a 5% matching grant, total grant being $189,000. It's 6:16 a.m. on this Tuesday morning, 44 degrees.
Growth begins with an idea. At the People's Bank, that idea is to give you the banking service you deserve. We carry out that idea in everything we do. In fact, it's become our motto, working for you. As that idea continues to grow, let us work for you at our new location, 1300 West Main Street, opening this summer. Let us be the place where your ideas begin, where you get the banking you deserve. Come grow with us, The People's Bank, working for you.
Member FDIC, inclusing Lender.
Hello.
Hi.
That'll be 34907. Sir, I can't take that and that's only about $120 anyway.
But the magic man pays three times face value at Glasgow Coin and Jewelry. Watch this.
We can make that happen.
Top dollar guaranteed.
Not to be confused with Magic Mike.
Why the name Fire Pit Spirits? Because your beverage of choice is meant to be enjoyed with good friends, celebrating life, happiness, or just the end of a hard week of work. And as always, it's meant to be consumed responsibly. So whatever you're celebrating, gather round your fire pit because good times are made with the ones you choose to keep in your circle. Fire Pit Spirits, best selection, best service, best friends.
TJ Regional Health offers a vast array of medical services in our community. The TJ Health Pavilion is home to over 35 family and specialty physicians, outpatient services center, the TJ Urgent Care, and the TJ Pavilion Pharmacy. The TJ Health Cave City Clinic is a walk-in medical care facility, providing care seven days a week with no appointment necessary. Stop by and visit one of our locations today.
In more local news, a bill would eventually end Kentucky's snow day school program. Kentucky would eventually eliminate a program allowing public school students to work from home during snow days under a bill that's cleared the state senate. Senate Bill 73 passed by a vote of 36 to 0. The bill would eliminate the state's non-traditional instruction program in three years. The program lets districts send work home with students during snow days so the day doesn't count as an absence and the school doesn't have to make it up at the end of the year. Republican State Senator David Giddens said some districts are having students do minimal work and counting it as a day. He said the program creates disparities of learning among the state's school districts. The bill now heads to the Kentucky House. And with some news from the Glasgow Barron County Chamber of Commerce, here's Executive Vice President Ernie Myers.
About what's going on at the Glasgow Barron County Chamber of Commerce this week? We have three important events going on and we'd like to invite everyone to take part in that. First of all, this noon, today at noon, we have ribbon cutting at the Ashley Home Store. Ashley Home Store is located at 204 South Rogers Wells Boulevard and we'll have a ribbon cutting for them at 12 noon. Come on down, see what Ashley Home Store has to offer in the way of furniture. A new shopping opportunity and a new employment opportunity within our community. Then this afternoon, 4:30 until 6, we will have a little reception here at the Glasgow Barron County Chamber of Commerce to celebrate the art of Sierra Rose. Sierra is quite an eclectic artist and we're looking forward to celebrating her art. Come down, have a glass of wine and a little cheese and we'll have a big time here at the Glasgow Barron County Chamber of Commerce at the art show for Sierra Rose. Then this coming Friday on the 26th, First Quarterly Breakfast will be held at the Glasgow Golf and Country Club. We had to postpone this breakfast if you remember from last Friday, so that will be this coming Friday on the 26th, 7 o'clock a.m. The breakfast is sponsored by Edmonton State Bank. The program is the state of the city and the state of the county and we'll hear from Judge Michael Hale and Mayor Dick Doty to tell us what's going on in the city and the county. So a lot of things going on, a lot of projects and events with the Glasgow Barron County Chamber of Commerce where we're working together, building a better community.
With WCLU local news, I'm Angela Briggs, 6:21 a.m., 44 degrees.
At PBI Bank, we pride ourselves on providing great customer service with a hometown feel. We invite you to come in and meet our friendly staff who can help you apply for a mortgage, apply for an ag loan, open an account, or help with any other banking service. Trust PBI Bank to be your banking partner for personal or business accounts. Come visit or call us today. We are a Kentucky-based community bank, serving the Commonwealth for more than a century. Stop in or visit online at pbibank.com to learn more about what we can offer you.
Would you like to choose when you pay your electric bill? With EPB iPay, you can. iPay allows you to draft money into your electric account online or at our office. The myusage.com website lets you keep track of how much electricity you're using and lets you know your current balance. When your account's getting low, you can get reminders to add more money to your electric account by text or email. With iPay, there's...
...I'm Ed Huckleberry. A bill to give crime victims constitutional rights gets approval in a state house committee. The measure known as Marcy's Law has the support of Melissa Buchanan, whose brother was murdered.
Victims are just regular people. The justice system that's made up of lawyers, law enforcement, and judges, and full of complicated procedures and legal jargon is very intimidating.
Critics of the bill say the law already guarantees victims' rights and Marcy's Law would often conflict with the rights of defendants. The man who attacked Senator Rand Paul at his Bowling Green home will serve 21 months in prison. Renee Boucher attacked Paul last fall while Paul was mowing his lawn. The issue between the two men was a brush pile where Paul was putting debris. Paul's injuries included six broken ribs. A deep sigh of relief from Senate Majority Leader Mitch McConnell now that the federal government shutdown impasse has ended.
We should not let the political feuds or policy disagreements obscure the simple fact that every member of this body cares deeply about the challenges facing our country.
The funding bill that passed provides money to operate the government for three weeks, the measure signed by President Trump. In sports, for the first time since 2014, the University of Kentucky Wildcats are not listed among the AP's top 25 teams.
Front court and the game is over. The Wildcats slid out of the latest poll from number 18 after losses to both South Carolina and Florida, losing a 30-game home winning streak in Southeastern Conference play. UK shot 40% against the Gators but failed to prevent Florida from making threes. That loss means Kentucky is no longer on the top 25, snapping a 68-week stretch in the poll. I'm Healy Hanson.
And I'm Ed Huckleberry.
This is the Kentucky News Network.
No late fees. Sign up for iPay at the EPB office at 100 Mallory Drive.
Who will be the future face of Petigo lesson Berry? Through expert analysis, we've confirmed their potential. With intense training, we've prepared them for any occurrence. We've taken their strengths and made them stronger. Now it's time to see what they're made of. Presenting the future face of ISU Petigo Lesson Berry Insurance.
Hello, I'm Jared Persley.
And I'm Daniel Byrd.
And we're more than prepared to serve you here at ISU Petigo Lesson Berry Insurance.
Growing with a proud community since 1902.
Lesson Berry Do-It Center is Glasgow's only locally-owned hardware store and that means a lot to me. Lesson Berry's has been in business for over 100 years. I walk in the store, they know who I am, and I get the help that I need. For me, Lesson Berry's is the easiest place for me to shop simply because it's a local, family-owned business and I feel comfortable when I'm there. And I'm glad there's still a place like that in Glasgow I can go to.
If you're thinking about a pre-need monument, they're here to make the process as stress-free as possible with plenty of examples and a multitude of custom options. South Central Kentucky Monuments has the ability to offer you exactly what you want or help steer you in the right direction based on your preferences. Let my friends David, Jerry, and Adam Jesse provide the service and craftsmanship you deserve. To learn more, visit southcentralkymonuments.com.
It's 6:26 and 44 degrees from WCLU. We'll check in with Ray Stigig and realize we're going to get back to more winter-like temperatures over the next several days. In area funeral announcements this hour, William A. Bill Allen, age 96, of Park City, died Monday at Diversicare of Glasgow. At this hour, arrangements for William A. Bill Allen are incomplete but will be under the direction of the A.F. Crow and Sons Funeral Home. Jewel Judy Sissel, age 70, of Glasgow, died Monday in Louisville. She was born in Glasgow, the daughter of the late Charlie Melton and Vinnie Blakely Melton. She was a homemaker and helped with raising her grandchildren. She was a member of the Faith, Hope, and Love Worship Center. Survivors included daughter April Morris of Glasgow, brother James Melton of Glasgow, sister Jenny Sissel of Louisville, two grandchildren Courtney and Katie Sissel, both of Glasgow, a great-grandchild Jade Sissel of Glasgow, and two special nieces Nancy Melton of Glasgow, and Linda Gray of Arkansas. Funeral services for Jewel Judy Sissel will be Wednesday afternoon at 1 o'clock at the A.F. Crow and Sons Funeral Home. Burial will be in the Bon Air Cemetery. Visitation will be Wednesday beginning at 11 o'clock and continuing until time for Effie Mae Harris, age 83, of Rowlitz, died Thursday. She professed her love for Christ at an early age and was a longstanding member of the Woodsonville Baptist Church. Effie retired from RCA and from Washington Township Schools as a service worker. She is survived by two daughters, Joanne Twiman and Aline Foster, one sister Barbara Sue Driver, a brother William L. Coats, two stepdaughters, and several grandchildren and great-grandchildren. Services for Effie Mae Harris will be held at 1 o'clock Saturday at the Woodsonville Baptist Church. Burial will be in the Woodsonville Memorial Gardens. Visitation will be from 10 a.m. until 1 p.m. Saturday at the church. The Brooks Funeral Home is in charge of those arrangements. June Gardner Milby, age 76, of Elizabeth Town, died Sunday at Hard Memorial Hospital in E-Town. She was a retired nursing assistant at Sunrise Manor Nursing Home and a member of the Knoxus Creek Baptist Church. She is survived by two daughters, Nina Pretty and husband JR of E-Town, and Denise Hall and husband Mark of Eastview. Two sons, Neil Miller and wife Lynn of Shepherdsville, and Alan Miller and wife Shauna of Lawrenceburg. Eleven grandchildren and 12 great-grandchildren survive as well. Memorial services for June Gardner Milby will be held at 5 o'clock Wednesday afternoon at the Brooks Funeral Home with burial to follow in the cemetery at Rowlitz. Visitation begins at 1 o'clock on Wednesday afternoon at the Brooks Funeral Home. Memorial contributions can be made to the American Lung Association, or the American Cancer Society, or the American Heart Association. Funeral services for Hartwell Sunny Climber, age 73, of Horse Cave, will be at 1 o'clock Wednesday at Wynn Funeral Home. Burial will follow in the Cosby Cemetery. Visitation begins tonight at 5 p.m. at the Wynn Funeral Home. Expressions of sympathy may be made in his honor to St. Jude Children's Research Hospital. Services for Elizabeth Fancy Emberton, age 70, of Heistville, will be today at 1 o'clock at Hatcher and Sadler Funeral Home. Burial will be in the Kaney Fork Cemetery. Services for Yulame Clarkson Harrison, age 86, of Fountain Run, will be at 1 o'clock today at the Fountain Run Funeral Home. Burial will follow in the Fountain Run Cemetery. Funeral services for Melinda Gale Worf, age 46, of Glasgow, will be today at noon at Bob Hunt Funeral Chapel. Burial to follow in the Worf Cemetery in Green County. Obituary information's available 24 hours a day at wcluradio.com. No login is necessary.
Everyone wants to know when McRib will be back, including Jamie, who shared that you must answer its call.
Jamie, McRib is back.
You posted, and we answered.
McRib is back. Answer its call for a limited time only at McDonald's.
Nothing comes before coffee.
How can I help you gentlemen?
That's why we're introducing a whole new line of espresso drinks from McCafé.
Hello.
Hi. That'll be 34907. Sir, I can't take that and that's only about $120 anyway.
But the magic man pays three times face value at Glasgow Coin and Jewelry. Watch this.
We can make that happen.
Top dollar guaranteed.
Not to be confused with Magic Mike.
BR Tire, we're always on.
It's exactly 6:32. You can set your clock by it this morning. 43 degrees, temperature still dropping just a wee bit. Let's turn to local sports. High school basketball action from Monday night. Games heard here on WCLU. The Glasgow Scotty Boys down Allen County Scottsville, 48 to 45. And it was the Allen County Scottsville Lady Patriots defeating the Glasgow Lady Scotties, 57 to 26. Also last night, Bardstown Bethlehem down Caverna, 53 to 45. Coming up tonight in high school basketball, Glasgow hosts LeRue County at Scotty Gym. It's a girl-boy doubleheader. The girls play first at 5:30. Joe Myers, Larry Alexander, and Bruce Trabu will have the broadcasts of both games beginning at 5:20 tonight on 1490 WCLU and online at playwclu.com. Other girl-boy doubleheaders tonight, Barron County travels to Logan County. Allen County Scottsville visits Greenwood. Edmonton County entertains Medkeff County. Warren East goes to Russellville and South Warren welcomes Warren Central. Boys action tonight, Caverna goes to Butler County. Hart County hosts Nelson County. And Bowling Green's on the road at Mullenberg County. The girls' game tonight, Hart County plays at Campbellsville. And that's a check of local sports.
And we answer the call. We know that's what keeps our loyal customers coming back season after season, year after year. With so many vining for your business, improving our service is not just a good practice, it's a necessity. From our easy-to-navigate website to our easy-to-deal-with service department, we work hard to make it easy for you to choose us. No one keeps you rolling like BR Tire on Lover's Lane in Bowling Green and West Main Street in Glasgow.
Hi, I'm...
Growth begins with an idea. At the People's Bank, that idea is to give you the banking service you deserve. We carry out that idea in everything we do. In fact, it's become our motto, working for you. As that idea continues to grow, let us work for you at our new location, 1300 West Main Street, opening this summer. Let us be the place where your ideas begin, where you get the banking you deserve. Come grow with us, The People's Bank, working for you.
Member FDIC, inclusing Lender.
Check us out.
43 degrees, 6:34 Shelley. Talk with Ray Stigig, you can get a handle on the next couple of days weather-wise.
Gray sky and as low pressure spins to our northwest and that's driving in some chillier air and a gusty wind this morning. Temperatures are going to probably hold today in the mid 40s and actually fall a little bit into the low 40s this afternoon. So certainly a change from yesterday's 60-degree weather. Next change tonight, we'll clear the sky, we're colder, 26, but the breeze does back off. Got a pair tomorrow, a pair of fours with a mix of clouds and sunshine, 44, mid 20s tomorrow night. Thursday mostly sunny, low 50s, upper 50s, back near 60 degrees by Friday. I'm meteorologist Ray Stigig, The Weather Channel, on WCLU, your home for local.
Thank you, Ray. We have had in the last 24 hours, two tenths of an inch of rain, just kind of a cold rain that just made for a blustery look yesterday. The barometer is down at 29.79. The winds out of the southwest at eight miles an hour, but at one point in the overnight, we had wind gusts up to 31 miles an hour. And again, two tenths of an inch of rain. In the big bucket on the roof, that's where we are this morning at WCLU where it's 43 degrees, 6:35. Coming right back, we'll check out some birthday action for you. And of course, we have a very interesting day in the archives coming up too, so I want to make sure that you're aware of that and just kind of ride along with us, will you?
Attention, if you're home of business experiences, frequent rains...
Glasgow, Kentucky. My parents started this business over 50 years ago, so we know flooring here at Parish Carpet. We have a large showroom and a big selection in stock. We do custom binding and we do free estimates. We've served a lot of people in the 50-plus years and we'd like to thank each and every one of you, so if you have a flooring need, come see us at Parish Carpet.
Glasgow Prescription Center is the culmination of my husband's professional career. When he took over GPC, he didn't want to be just good, he'd already done that. He wanted to be great. And I think his patients would agree that he's done just that. Could he get by with a smaller staff? Sure. The gift shop, the flower shop, delivery people, a brand-new facility, none of those things are required to have a pharmacy, but that's why it's not just a good pharmacy, it's a great one. I'm really excited to see what Robert is going to do next because I know he's going to put his heart into it.
Ralphie's a fun place to go no matter when you have time to go, you just got to get there because when you're having a party, a birthday party, a family get-together, just a need for some space, that's the place, Ralphie's Fun Center. Let me get my birthday act together here. Should that be entirely possible? I've been writing down some birthdays, passing along some information, and let's see here, where did I put those birthdays? We have Alisa Di Filippo, that's Alisa Di Filippo, having a birthday. It's Maleka Grace Russell. Maleka Grace Russell is 14 today. Want to say happy birthday to a very nice lady, Ms. Mary Poland. That's Mary Poland having a birthday. It's also Velma Sowers birthday, Camilla Shive. We need a sound of gong here this morning for Charles Watkins. It's Charles's 70th birthday today. Want to be sure with Charles, happy number 70. Nalletta Ferkin has a birthday. Steve Goodman, Brittany Reed is celebrating. We also have Elizabeth King. We understand Elizabeth is 29 today, hanging on at 29. Amy Dixon with a birthday. It's Jennifer Cox. We also have, let's see, Dave Young and Sheila Williams having a birthday today. 651-9149, 800-956-1023. I want to read a part of what came in with a birthday a little bit earlier this morning. This is the birthday of Maleka Grace Russell. She is 14 and it reads... She is fourteen, and it reads, "Nana and Pa' McClellan love you to the moon and back a zillion times." That's a bunch, so let me sure and get that accolade out for Maleka Grace Russell today. One anniversary today thus far, we have Larry and Martha Davis. Happy anniversary to Larry and Martha today. Keep calling them in, sending them in on the email, on WCLWradio.com, and we'll look forward to spending the day sharing some of those birthdays. We're also gonna be giving away a Dairy Queen Birthday Cake and a rose from Greer's Florists. To somebody on the list, y'all make sure who you know is on the list.
Shouldn't financial advice focus on...
It's that time of the year again, folks, the leaves are changing, holiday decorations are coming out, and that means only one thing, it's almost election time. Campaigns can be stressful, you've gotta make it to every event, understand every issue, shake every hand, ask for every vote, you smile the entire time. Thank goodness you've got WCLU, your home for local.
Why the name Fire Pit Spirits? Because your beverage of choice is meant to be enjoyed with good friends, celebrating life, happiness, or just the end of a hard week of work. And, as always, it's meant to be consumed responsibly. So whatever you're celebrating, gather round your fire pit, because good times are made with the ones you choose to keep in your circle. Fire Pit Spirits. Best selection, best service, best friends.
Dick Lee. Dick Lee is having a birthday today, and we have Ms. Bonnie Haynes. Bonnie Haynes on the list of honors today too, so I like the fact that we can keep it current that way, for sure. Now let's get into the archives here, shall we? Yes, it's time to go down memory lane, learn about our past, helps us plan for the future, and explains a few things too. And it's brought to you by the good folks at Joseph A. Wade Industrial Hardware Services and the Tony Hogan Health Clinic.
Fifteen thousand inventory items, custom brake hoses while you wait, cylinder repair. Is there anything Joseph A. Wade can't do? Well, one thing's for sure, Joseph A. Wade Incorporated serves a large community of people who believe there's no job they can't do, and that's the same attitude Joseph A. Wade has in their line of work. So for the smallest screws, allen wrenches, or drill bits, or even a five-stage hydraulic cylinder measuring twenty-five feet in length, Joseph A. Wade's motto, "No problem." Joseph A. Wade Incorporated, three-eleven Industrial Drive, Glasgow.
The medical field has advanced tremendously over the last few decades, but for patients, it becomes more and more difficult to get an appointment with your primary care provider. However, the Tony Hogan Health Clinic offers an alternative, more old-fashioned, laid-back approach. So it's no coincidence they're located in the Mars Medical Building, a place that's always been known for its patient-first mentality. Whether it's a walk-in or a scheduled visit, Tony Hogan, nurse practitioner, and his staff are there to make sure you get the treatment you deserve. The Tony Hogan Health Clinic, two-seven-oh-six-five-one-six-seven-zero-seven.
All right, we're gonna grab all of our equipment and go archiving here, you think? Headed out the front door.
I've got my coffee, I'm good to go.
Yeah, coffee's good today. You know, here's the thing, it's cooler than what, my thermometer right here in the control room says forty-three degrees, but it's a cool forty-three.
It's a marvelous, marvelous forty-three.
It's a nice day though, you know, looking forward to another nice day here in southern Kentucky.
So far, so good, but you know, it's only six forty-three.
Well, that's right, but you know, we've got a good start. We're pointing in the right direction. We're going back a hundred years.
Okay.
We had some progress going back a hundred years ago. This was in The Republican. It was an advertisement, kind of a want ad, and it reads as follows. "We want ten thousand cross ties, and we will pay the highest market price." That's the Glasgow Railway Company, W.L. Porter, the president.
Like the cross ties that go over the railroad?
Yeah, that's right. So it was like they needed ten thousand of them here, the local railroad did.
That's a couple of them anyway.
That's right. I don't know if anybody has those in stock, but you know, certainly probably caught the eye of all the local sawmill operators here.
I mean, you probably couldn't come up with ten thousand here very quick either.
Well, I mean, I don't, you know, I'm sure back in the day, of course, they have to treat those things, and I don't think that's an instantaneous thing, but nonetheless, they, here Mr. Porter said, "Yep, folks, we need ten thousand of them. What can you do?"
There you go. On your mark, get set, go.
Building a railroad in nineteen and eighteen.
See, I'm gonna think that, you know, I wouldn't want somebody building the cross ties that like specialized in cross tie building.
Well, probably...
I don't just like, hey, you know, anybody that's got a saw out there, you know.
Well, they probably had standards, but nonetheless, it probably was a difficult job for folks to start from scratch.
I like the way you keep saying "probably."
Probably so. You know, the probability is good, that they probably met the need. Got enough probabilities for you?
I'm gonna start, I'm gonna put like, you know, they have like the curse jars, where you say a curse word, you gotta put a quarter in. I have a "probably" jar.
All right, well, you know, I'll contribute.
There you go.
January the twenty-eighth, nineteen twenty, that's January the twenty, nineteen twenty-eight. Let me say it right here. Let me say it wrong one more time, okay? See if I can go for threes. This is an advertisement in The Glasgow Times from nineteen twenty-eight, and I think this is a pretty much a leading-edge ad. It says, "Again, Chevrolet electrifies America with a great new motor car. A new automobile so sensational as to electrify the nation."
So sensational.
Marvelous new Fisher bodies. A hundred-and-seven-inch wheelbase, four inch...
I love one hundred-and-seven-inch wheelbases, they're my favorite.
That's right, and that's actually four inches longer than before.
I have no idea what that even means.
Four-wheel brakes, and many engineering advances. In addition to Chevrolet's long, famous list of quality features, it's a small wonder that this bigger and better Chevrolet is being hailed as an outstanding automotive achievement. You wanna see one? They have one at Richardson Chevrolet.
Well, so you'd have to go down there and look at that.
That's right. I don't know where it was, but you know, they come down there and see this marvelous achievement of a hundred-and-seven-inch wheelbase.
They didn't have any Eeps down there.
No, no Eeps, those had not arrived yet.
That's a specialty car.
That is, it's like almost a one-of-a-kind.
I believe it is.
Nineteen thirty-eight, we've got this news story. Interesting to think about this, and we've alluded to this before, we were talking about commencements and graduations and things like that, but it's in The Republican here in nineteen thirty-eight. "Most of the rural schools of this county will end on Friday, January the twenty-first. Several of the teachers are planning to resume studies at Western Teachers College this semester." So you see, school was out, one reason was so that the teachers could go to school.
I mean, you want your teacher to know something.
Back in nineteen thirty-eight, but it, you know, it always seems interesting to me, well, school's out for another year here at January.
That's crazy.
I guess, you know, a lot harder to get around, all that sort of stuff.
I'd be like, you better take my kid back at school.
Well, you know, you probably gonna have to, there's nobody there.
Yeah, that's fine, he can watch himself.
There at Western Teachers College, Teachers College. All right, here's a nice couple here whose engagement was announced in nineteen and forty-eight. This was in The Glasgow Times, the engagement of Ms. Sarah Rogers Kaufman to Mr. Scott Wendell Moore. That was announced this week by her parents, Mr. and Ms. William Perry Kaufman. So there it is, official. Ms. Sarah Rogers Kaufman, nice lady, Mr. Scott Moore, and you know, the thing is, is that it was official when the parents announced it.
I guess so.
Don't believe anything these kids say.
Well, you know how rumors are.
We're announcing it. That was nineteen forty-eight.
We're finally getting rid of them here.
Nineteen fifty-eight, I think this is a, I have read this story several times preparing for today, and I still gotta go slow. Follow along with me, okay?
Should I take notes?
Well, you can if you wanna understand it, or maybe I can just make it plain.
Okay.
The headline reads, "The Junior J.C.'s Discuss Problems With Seniors." All right, that's enough to make you wanna read the story.
Right.
Well, here we go. But it's, I don't know, just, this is just...
I'm thinking like senior citizens, seniors in high school, who do they matter?
Here's what we have. The junior of, the junior Chamber of Commerce had the opportunity at their regular meeting Tuesday to discuss civic problems with the old bunch.
Ah.
The Glasgow Chamber of Commerce, when James Trigg Pace, who was, I know Mr. Pace, one of the finest gentlemen that you would ever want to know, but in nineteen and fifty-eight, he was the new president of the old fellers.
Uh-oh. Didn't wanna change anything, did they?
I don't know if Mr. Pace likes that designation, but he was a newly-declared old feller in nineteen and fifty-eight.
There you go.
And also Mrs. Catherine Billingsley of the old chamber met with the junior group and discussed present material plans to improve this city. So Ms., you know, I hope they dodged around, they didn't wanna put anything old on Ms. Catherine Billingsley, but certainly she was a member of the old group.
A seasoned member.
That's right. And also, at that meeting, it was reported that the president of the J.C., Charles B. Honeycutt, announced tentative plans for a teenage rodeo.
I guarantee you, if Charles Honeycutt wanted...
But details have not been released yet. Interesting, a teenage rodeo.
Yes.
Sounds like it could draw a crowd.
I mean, young people tell you what young people want.
The junior Chamber of Commerce, it was the young people, how was it it says? They discussed...
Having trouble with his seniors.
That's right, having trouble with the seniors. So I mean, I don't know, the only person I heard mentioned as a senior in here was James Trigg Pace. He's the president of the old fellers, and he's no trouble at all.
There you go.
This day in nineteen sixty-eight, here we go, a new man on the sales floor. This was the day in nineteen sixty-eight that Doug Marr joined the new tractor and farm supply store. He's gonna be in charge of sales, and that's certainly something he's good at, Mr. Doug Marr, selling tractors, et cetera.
Selling ice to Eskimos.
This day in nineteen seventy-eight, we have, speaking of ice, and this one, now folks will have some stories to tell you about here.
Okay.
This was the day in nineteen seventy-eight that a dozen inches of snow was falling and still falling in the area. All area schools are closed, and some plants and some businesses. This was January the seventeenth of nineteen and seventy-eight.
You know, I can remember being a kid, you know, with snow and staying, you could sled for days.
Well, here's the thing, if I remember right, I was in college at this time, and I remember that schools were out on, starting on the seventeenth, and didn't go back until the first of February.
Really?
That is one bad snowstorm.
I know, that's right.
And that was in nineteen and seventy-eight. We'll have some more talk about that as we go through the week, but...
Somewhere my mom's got this terrible, God-forsaken picture of me when I was a kid playing in the snow, and I've got this toboggan on, they're like the top of it, you know, looked like an elf hat, like it came all the way almost to the ground, like a little poof on the end.
Yeah, well...
I look ridiculous.
It sounds like, well, something Dr. Seuss would have published.
She told me to wrap that, you know, wrap the tail of it around my neck like a scarf.
Surely she needs to change her Facebook post to that picture.
My mom doesn't even have Facebook, she just like gets all my sisters and medals.
It's a good day to learn there.
She needs, my mom needs Facebook.
She just wants to, you know, put that picture of you on there.
Mom just likes to be incognito.
Gotcha. All right, here let's go to nineteen and eighty-eight. Let's go, let's have Saturday night, a TV night on Saturday night here in nineteen eighty-eight. You wanna know what you're gonna watch? Nineteen eighty-eight, tune into The Facts of Life.
Love that show.
Two-two-seven.
Ooh, I love, it's on now, on like one of those old TV channels.
Yeah, that's right, the old guard, the old, what is it, the Chamber of Commerce, the old crowd?
Those old seniors like two-two-seven.
That's right. How about the Golden Girls?
Love the Golden Girls.
How about Amen?
Did that guy from the Jeffersons, anything?
I don't know, I don't know. Nineteen eighty-eight, I was, I didn't have a TV. Also, JJ Starbucks, did you see that one?
Never even heard of that.
All right, also you could watch High Mountain Rangers.
Never heard of that one.
Houston Knights, and that's with a K, Houston Knights.
Never heard of that one.
West Fifty-seventh.
Never heard of that one.
Well, that was, I think that was probably the name of a CBS News magazine, 'cause since that's the address of CBS News in New York on West Fifty-seventh Street. Also, you could watch Dolly Chara and Spencer for Hire.
I remember Spencer for Hire, so I Googled the High Mountain Rangers.
Yeah.
And it describes him as a highly-trained wilderness search and rescue law enforcement officers. They don't look like they could find their way out of a rain.
Yeah, well, that's why they were just only doing it up high.
Poor things, they look pitiful. But maybe that's how they were supposed to look back then.
Well, you know, you had to stand out if you were a High Mountain Ranger.
They stand out all right.
And that was nineteen eighty-eight. But you missed that show. I don't think those are in reruns anywhere either.
Yeah, I don't, I can probably get it like on IMDB or some, I mean, on IMDB.
Okay. That's another acronym I don't know.
Yeah, but I'm not gonna get it, so it's not a big deal.
Nineteen ninety-eight, here we go, this was a big, this was a picture in The Glasgow Daily Times.
Okay.
Nineteen ninety-eight, a picture of Nellie Buford, who was one of the choir members singing the praises of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. at ceremonies held Monday to honor him.
I'm gonna tell you right now, when Faye Neal sang this past celebration they had up there, I felt like I was in a blues bar in Memphis.
Yeah, I mean, you know, he can sing, no question about it.
I'm like, where did that come from? I had no idea he could sing like that.
Yeah, oh yeah. He's a talented fellow for sure.
Yes.
All right, let's move to nineteen, or actually, this is two thousand and eight. Ten years ago, interesting story that was written by Ernie Wagner, an excellent journalist. This was an article in The Barron County Progress on the Glasgow Fire Department, written by Ernie Wagner.
Okay.
And they had some pictures in there from the nineteen seventy-two firemen, and here's some nineteen seventy-two firemen for you. Rex Foster, Jesse Pickett, Jerry Smith, the chief, Kenneth Pace. Also on the fire department in nineteen, well, actually nineteen seventy-two picture, how about Terry Morgan, Billy Wilson, Leland Hoag, Charles Jackson, Paul Williams, and Larry Riddle. Some excellent firemen. This was a news story in The Progress ten years ago, but it was written about the fire department in the early seventies, something to brag on, you know?
And they got three new ones last night?
Yeah, I tell you what, it certainly is a, that certainly is not a place where you can get hired and think you got the day off unless there's a fire.
Instead, like the one day that I did the ride-along over there, there was like, you know, no fires anywhere.
Yeah, well, you know...
Not even a small grass fire.
That's the way it is, that's a good day, but they were prepared, I'll tell you.
Had like seventeen the next day.
Well, it's just good to see how prepared we are.
Oh, yeah, exactly.
And how we got to where we are, and some of the things that happened that got us, you know, pumped up. And we'll be certainly enjoying sharing that. We had that, we'll be, I know there's some more news in here about this nineteen seventy-eight Armageddon of snow.
There you go. It's just a, we had two feet a few years ago.
Yeah, that's right, it's, you know, it happens. It's tis the season, as they say.
It is.
I do really wanna thank the archivist out of the Cultural Center, I wanna be sure you get the names of everybody that's putting together the archives, there's certainly some, we have the old guard...
There you go.
Who's doing the work, but then some other folks are helping out, and we'll be glad to, be looking forward to talking to Sherri Wesley and finding out more about that.
Gail, I did not call you old, that was humorous.
No, I say, I'm talking about the guard, okay?
Okay. You better try to back out of that one.
Yeah, I will, I'm gonna back out of the pictures. I wanna find the...
I love you, Gail, I think you're marvelous.
Hold on.
You must be getting armed in case she comes in.
No, I just wanted, there's some things that are coming up here, but I wanna make sure that everybody knows that still Ms. Brown's art is on display in the Snavely Gallery down there, let's don't, let's don't let that get away from us, and then there's other things coming up too, we're gonna share. Thanks to the archive sponsors, including Joseph A. Wade Industrial Hardware Services and the Tony Hogan Health Clinic.
...................................................
Well, let me tell you, today we're patting Neletta Furkin on the back. It's Neletta Furkin Day on the radio. Ne, Neletta was nominated, uh, by some folks, and, of course, you know, that's one of the neat things that folks are taking advantage of, is that we have a way to nominate persons of the day on our website, and you could tell us a little bit about them and request that they are good as gold on a certain day. Well, today, uh, it's Neletta's birthday. And here's the reason for nomination, as listed by the person who nominated Neletta. She is a warm, loving, kind person who cares deeply for all people. She is special to many. She is a supervisor at Fruit of the Loom Soul Center, where she handles various personalities and cultures. She lovingly treats all with fairness, caring, and kindness. Is that not nice, uh, to be said about you? And I'm guessing here that this, uh, Fruit of the Loom Soul Center does have, you know, a lot of different ages and a lot of, uh, different, uh, cultures represented there, and, uh, according to Kathy, who is the nominator of this particular accolade, that Neletta Furkin is good at doing all of that. So if you see Neletta Furkin around today, pat her on the back. Tell her she's good as gold. From WCLU, and, uh, a little taste of Texas. Nice indeed. We do, we enjoy having the opportunity to get the rest of the story and use that to nominate persons of the day. Uh, seven oh one, shall we explore the weather again? South Central Bank says that'd be fine.
Actually, starting to move in on a gusty breeze this morning. The chillier temperatures in yesterday, most of us hovering near sixty. I don't think we see sixty degrees come back for the next couple of days, but maybe by the end of the week. Clouds in, gusty winds this morning, I think mainly cloudy today. May actually see temperatures fall a few degrees into the low forties. Overnight tonight, will finally clear. High pressure will come on in, will fall back to the colder mid twenties. Clouds and sun on Wednesday, forty-four, twenties again Wednesday night. Thursday, mostly sunny and slightly milder into the low fifties. And then Friday, with more sun than clouds, will go upper fifties to near sixty degrees. I'm meteorologist Ray Stajic, a weather channel on WCLU, your home for local.
Yeah, Ray likes to do that sixty T's in there. Pretty interesting, Ray. We've got, uh, forty-three degrees. We, uh, recorded two tenths of an inch of rain yesterday, and we have, let's see, the barometer at two nine point seven nine, fifty-eight percent humidity. Uh, the winds are blowing out of the southwest about eight miles an hour, but we will note that the maximum, uh, uh, wind speed that we've had in the last twenty-four hours is a gusty thirty-one mile an hour temperature. This weather update on WCLU brought to you by South Central Bank. It's forty-three degrees.
Glasgow Prescription Center is the culmination of my husband's professional career. When he took over GPC, he didn't want to be just good. He'd already done that. He wanted to be great. And I think his patients would agree that he's done just that. Could he get by with a smaller staff? Sure. The gift shop, the flower shop, delivery people, a brand-new facility, none of those things are required to have a pharmacy, but that's why it's not just a good pharmacy, it's a great one. I'm really excited to see what Robert is gonna do next, because I know he's gonna put his heart into it.
Why the name Fire Pit Spirits? Because your beverage of choice is meant to be enjoyed with good friends, celebrating life, happiness, or just the end of a hard week of work. And, as always, it's meant to be consumed responsibly. So, whatever you're celebrating, gather round your fire pit, because good times are made with the ones you choose to keep in your circle. Fire Pit Spirits. Best selection. Best service. Best friends.
Seven oh four, WCLU, forty-three degrees. I think we're up to date on everything. I've been telling you about some of the things that are, uh, coming up here, you know. We've, we've got, uh, several things. Of course, we have Ernie Myers coming up here in the seven o'clock morning edition to talk about, uh, ribbon cutting that's coming up today, as well as, uh, uh, a, an art reception this afternoon. Join, uh, join us for the seven o'clock morning edition, and we'll find out about that, and remind everybody of the rescheduling of the quarterly breakfast. So, just lots of pl, places to go and be and do. Let's play the trivia question now. Long John's A&amp;W All-American Foods, the proud sponsor of trivia. Somebody's gonna win a fish and more. Lots of other ways to win, like when you go out there and you savor the taste of the cod and shrimp basket. Why don't we ask the question, and then why don't you call in and win a fish and more from Long John's A&amp;W? Six-five-one-nine-one-four-nine-eight-hundred-nine-five-six-one-oh-two-three. Here we go. What is the name of the currency used in Croatia? All right, you're from Croatia, or you're going to Croatia. What do they call the currency in Croatia? Six-five-one-nine-one four-nine-eight-hundred-nine-five-six-one-oh-two-three. You gotta know how to convert your dollars to this particular, uh, currency in order to, uh, you know, be able to buy stuff in Croatia. Hi, Tru, say it again?
Kuna.
Kuna it is, and who's it speaking?
It's Junior Coe.
Junior, how you doing?
Oh, I'm great this morning, Henry.
All right. Well, you know, I'm, I, that's very impressive there, Juno, 'cause I, uh, Juno. I said Kuna and Juna, and a Kuna Mataba. Junior?
[laughing]
I, I, I just, I got too many words in here.
That's right.
That's right. It's the Kuna. You know, the Kuna has only been around since nineteen ninety-four. They had some other form of something in Croatia, uh, before then. But nonetheless, if you, have you been to Croatia yet, there, Junior?
No, sir, I haven't, and I have a little help, uh, this morning from, uh, an iPhone, so-
Okay, all right. Well, that's, you know, that isn't a loud deal.
I'm not that intelligent this morning.
Well, I mean, you know, you're, you've, 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 you're an intelligent young man, you know, and, uh, this just worked out good today, where you win the, uh, Long John Silver's Fish and More. You can handle that, can't you?
That's great, Henry.
That's right. So you go out there and get you, uh, a, uh, fish and more, and think about Croatia.
I will.
And, uh, they, you know, they have pictures of their leaders on their, on these Kunas. So, uh, nonetheless, you got it. Have a good day, sir.
You do the same. Thank you, sir.
Bye-bye. Junior Coe, that's right. Junior says, yeah? If I'm going to Croatia, I gotta have some spending money, get me some Kuna. We'll play tomorrow. Come back and join us. Thanks to Long John's A&amp;W.
Reporter Carrie Anderson is in Anchorage.
A tsunami watch is in effect for the entire west coast of the U.S. mainland. Tsunami Watch has been canceled for Hawaii. CBS News Special Report, I'm Deborah Rodriguez.
Last month's GM incentives at Bailey Gibson were so popular, they're bringing them back in January. Isn't that right, Terry Hagan?
Last month, we called it big money. Well, we got some big money this month as well. We've got some two thousand seventeen Buick LaCrosse's. Across the board, you're looking around eight thousand dollars off in rebates and incentives. That's huge. It's good a car, good on gas mileage, it's sporty, but yet it's luxurious. Many different options you can get on that. Gotta get them before they're gone. And we've got our two thousand seventeen Buick Envisions. That's a mid-size SUV, all packages. You're looking at eighteen percent off of that sticker. Almost ten grand. Please come down to Bailey Gibson and let me show you these Buick LaCrosse's, these Buick Envisions. Take them on the road, drive them, show them to somebody. I guarantee you, you'll love it. Don't miss out on this big money deal.
Everybody wants to feel good about their pharmacy, but in the quest for good health, price does become a factor. In Glasgow, we have a pharmacy that has been able to combine customer service with the lowest possible price, day in and day out. That pharmacy is Park Avenue Pharmacy. Ask your friends. They'll tell you that when comparing the price of prescription drugs, time and time again, Park Avenue Pharmacy is the lowest price. And with full-time pharmacists and friendly faces, you know, you should request the prescriptions be filled at Park Avenue Pharmacy. Park Avenue Pharmacy is located in the Park Avenue Shopping Center, easy to get to from anywhere. Phone six-five-one-five-one-five-six. You can get low prices and full service. Simply trust Park Avenue Pharmacy in Glasgow.
Eleven minutes after seven o'clock, Ray Stajic says, uh, several cool days coming up here before we see sixty again. We'll check in with Ray in a minute, but now let's check in with the newsroom and WCLU News Director Angela Briggs. Good morning, Angela.
Good morning, Henry. Less than five hours after releasing pictures of two suspects wanted in connection with a weekend theft, Barron County Sheriff's Deputy Mike Houchen said they had located the two individuals, and charges are expected. The theft occurred Sunday afternoon at Barron River Beverages. Still shots taken from the store's video surveillance showed two older women at the counter. The pair allegedly left the store in a white four-door SUV. Details surrounding the theft have not been released by the Barron County Sheriff's Office. Clearing committee, the Glasgow City Council will now vote on whether or not to allow the Barron River District Health Department to offer a needle exchange program. The Public Safety Committee met prior to last night's council meeting to discuss the measure. Their unanimous recommendation to the full council is to move forward with the program. Here's Councilmember Greg Harris.
After some discussion, we had a unanimous vote to recommend it to the council. Uh, we felt like the potential benefits outweighed the potential cost, and so we'll see what the council thinks here in a couple of weeks.
The program will be run and funded by the District Health Department. Inviting law enforcement and first responders to the meeting, Member Wendell Honeycutt said they wanted to make sure that if it passed, they had the blessing of local law enforcement.
I think we wanted to do what's right for the people of the community. Uh, we don't want to waste an opportunity to save someone from drug addiction.
Is that gonna be your employment?
Possibly provide them with an extra avenue to seek counseling.
Anyone participating in the program is required to meet with a representative from the Health Department at every visit, and it's a one-to-one exchange only allowed once a week. They're also offered information on treatment options and prevention of both treatment and disease. The access to counseling was a key part of Honeycutt's support.
The counseling is what will save a, a person's life to where they can rejoin society as a truly functioning member.
Already approved by the Barron Fiscal Corps, it's now in the hands of the City Council, who will vote on the measure at their next meeting. The program does require approval from both the county and the city in which it will operate. The council approved economic development incentives for both Federal Mogul and Link's labeling. Each are eligible to retain one percent of the one-and-a-half percent occupational license fee. Considering their expansion will create at least twenty-five new jobs, Federal Mogul will also receive a forgivable one hundred thousand dollar loan from the Glasgow Economic Development Loan Fund. Mayor Dick Doty noted the hard work of the Department of Public Works, as well as first responders, on their work last week battling the snow and ice. Mayor Doty said if you total the distance they spent clearing roads, it would have been the same as traveling every street in the city ten times. Chair Brad Gross said the Finance Committee wants the Glasgow Electric Plant Board to open up the bidding process for an auditor. Once proposals are received, the committee will review them and make their recommendation to the full council. In September of last year, the Kentucky Wired Project prompted the council to pass a resolution to advertise for bids for an internet franchise. No bids came in, and since then, City Attorney Rich Alexander has had several conversations with the folks in Frankfurt. Considered a sovereign entity, the Commonwealth said they weren't required to have a franchise, therefore, they would not be required to bid. Case law was cited as backup. Alexander told the council that they have reached an agreement which was detailed in the memorandum of understanding.
This memorandum of understanding protects the city. Um, it applies only to the Commonwealth and its agents, so that if there's a private entity that wants to try to hook on to the network or, uh, make profit off of it, then they have to apply for a franchise.
The council did approve the measure. The council also approved several reappointments. Wendell Honeycutt and Dr. Colin Kaiser to the ambulance board. Summer Harper, Betty Herbert, and Holly Alexander will continue to serve on the Plaza Theater Board. Melba Richardson and Peggy Bates were both reappointed to the Renaissance Steering Committee. Bill Anderson and Nancy Pointer will begin another term on the code enforcement board, and Sean Hale will fill the unexpired term of Betty Bailey on the code enforcement board. The Glasgow Fire Department welcomed three new firefighters, Mayor, Mayor Dick Doty, Sworin Bryant Blodgett, James Edge, and Todd Napier, at last night's meeting. As has been the tradition at the Glasgow Fire Department, one of the first pieces of equipment given to any rookie firefighter is their rope. They're required to keep it with them at all times. Tying it around their waist while they're in training anyone at any time and anywhere can ask any of them to tie a certain knot. The ability to tie a secure knot at the scene of a fire can mean the difference in someone getting hurt or not. They must be tied accurately and securely every single time, regardless of what's going on around them. And as a way to build this skill, Chief Brian Marr explained that they definitely encourage them to practice their knots. Since they are now officially firefighters, they did turn their ropes back in. The City Council did approve to file for a FEMA grant for the Fire Department for self-contained breathing apparatuses. How important are these to firefighters? Here's Chief Brian Marr.
The most important, because it protects not only in the here and now, uh, with the temperature and the smoke and the carbon monoxide, but also twenty years from now, uh, to prevent lung cancers, all those cancers that, uh, that a firefighter could get from smoke during a fire.
There are certain standards set out by OSHA in regard to these breathing apparatuses. This purchase will ensure the department remains in compliance with regulations as their equipment is aging. It's also about the safety of firefighters, because smoke inhalation can be deadly.
Most people that die in a structured fire do not die from burns or collapse. They actually die from smoke inhalation, and firefighters are exactly the same as every other human being in the world. That smoke knocks us out just like it does them.
The grant asked for funding for twenty-five of these apparatuses. If the funds are received, the local share will be a five percent matching grant. Total grant is a hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. It's seven seventeen a.m. on this Tuesday morning, forty-three degrees.
I'm Jared Persley.
And I'm Daniel Byrd.
As recent-
Who will be the future face of Petigo lesson Barry? Through expert analysis, we've confirmed their potential. With intense training, we've prepared them for any occurrence. We've taken their strengths and made them stronger. Now it's time to see what they're made of. Presenting the future face of ISU Petigo Lesson Barry Insurance.
Hello, I'm Jared Persley.
And I'm Daniel Byrd.
And we're more than prepared to serve you here at ISU Petigo Lesson Barry Insurance.
Growing with a proud community since nineteen oh two.
Hi.
Growth begins with an idea. At the People's Bank, that idea is to give you the banking service you deserve. We carry out that idea in everything we do. In fact, it's- In fact, it's become our motto, working for you. As that idea continues to grow, let us work for you at our new location, 1300 West Main Street, opening this summer. Let us be the place where your ideas begin, where you get the banking you deserve. Come grow with us, The People's Bank, working for you.
Member FDIC, in Lyles and Lender.
Fred Parrish here at Parrish Carpet in Glasgow, Kentucky. My parents started this business over 50 years ago, so we know flooring here at Parrish Carpet. We have a large showroom and a big selection in stock. We do custom binding and we do free estimates. We've served a lot of people in the 50-plus years, and we'd like to thank each and every one of you, so if you have a flooring need, come see us at Parrish Carpet.
... in Lander.
In more local news, even though it's 20 minutes after, here's your top story at seven. I'm Angela Briggs, WCLU, back with your top story at seven. Now, while the temperature over the past couple of days may have felt more like April than January, this is a drastic change from those we've seen in recent weeks. Snow and ice combined with lows in the single digits made it getting out very treacherous. Now, the vast majority of us take it for granted that no matter how tough our day was, we've always got a place we can go back to. Imagine if something happened and you didn't. What if you had no friends or no family to call on when times got tough, and you found yourself in a situation where you had nowhere to go? Could this happen to you or someone you know? The Kentucky Housing Corporation says that often, when people think about who's homeless, they imagine a person that suffers from substance abuse or maybe mental illness. However, research shows that hardships such as medical bills, car repairs, death of an income provider, or loss of a job can begin the trajectory towards becoming homeless. Also, a person fleeing from domestic violence for protection may not have another place to go. Now, in large cities, the homeless population is pretty evident. Rural homelessness, however, is often less visible, making many assume that it doesn't exist. Barron County Jailer Tracy Bellamy would disagree.
As a community, we should offer help if we can offer help. Unfortunately, I'm in a position here that I don't have a lot of space to utilize, but I do have some space. Comfortably, I can hold up to 10 people if need be. I wouldn't turn anybody down. We could get more people in there. But yeah, it's been a...it is out there. It is in Glasgow. We do have some people that are living out of their cars as well.
When news spread that people were having to sleep in the water street tunnel in downtown Glasgow, Bellamy stepped in and opened up the lobby at the detention center to give anyone who needed it a warm place to spend the night. He took me to the tunnel to show me why. After a good night's sleep, the individuals are fed a hot meal and given information about local programs and assistance, as well as where they can go to...
Yeah, this is exactly one of the reasons that we did. You see here, there's cushions, there's blankets, some sheets, and some cups. Even though it's kind of in a little muck here, you know, a good 0 degrees outside at night, it's still gonna be frigidly cold in here. It's very sad that somebody could have to sleep in here.
After a good night's sleep, the individuals are fed a hot meal and given information about local programs and assistance, as well as where they can go to find work. One of the main hurdles the homeless face when it comes to employment is the fact that they do not have a physical address. Personal identification can also pose a problem if they don't already have it. It too often requires a physical address. The Housing and Urban Development Offices, more commonly referred to as HUD, offer assistance for homeless veterans, as well as utility assistance for others. They can also help you get your GED, help you find a job, and get job training. If you're about to lose your home, HUD can connect you with a housing counselor, and there may be a way to help you save it. You can always contact the Salvation Army or Community Relief or the Barron County Detention Center to find out more about how you can help our local homeless. I'm Angela Briggs with WCLU, and this has been your top story at seven.
Challenges a loss can bring, and deal with challenges in your daily life. South Green Street... ... including how to help others who are dealing with grief and loss. This is completely free. If you'd like more information, contact Alan Jones at 270-670-8345. That's 270-670-8345. It's absolutely free, and it's presented Saturday and Sunday, January 27th and 28th, by the South Green Street Church of Christ.
From the Kentucky News Network, I'm Ed Huckleberry. Kentucky lawmakers are moving quickly on a proposal to award constitutional protections to crime victims. A House committee on Monday advanced the proposed constitutional amendment, known as Marcy's Law, that would ensure victims have a voice at criminal proceedings of their alleged assailants. Attorney General Andy Beshear is suing a national opioid distributor for allegedly misleading business practices to flood the state with that drug.
Andy Beshear announced he has sued McKesson Corporation for failing to report large volumes of opioid shipments in Kentucky with state and federal authorities.
McKesson intentionally distributed enormous amounts of prescription opioids throughout Kentucky with total disregards to the lives and safety of our people.
This is the second lawsuit Beshear has filed against opioid distributors. He sued Endo Pharmaceuticals and Endo Health Solutions in November. I'm Suzanne Duval.
The 911 call from Senator Rand Paul after he was attacked by a neighbor last fall is made public.
I was assaulted by a neighbor, and I'd like the police to come and investigate and talk to the neighbor.
Where did the assault happen at?
In my yard while I was mowing the grass.
Yesterday, Paul's attacker Renee Boucher was sentenced to 21 months in prison for the attack that left the Bowling Green Republican with six broken ribs. Autopsies on three people killed when a towboat exploded Friday, and Marshall County fined that they died of injuries suffered during the blast. Six other people were injured when the towboat on the Tennessee River went up in flames. The blast originated inside the docked boat, which was under repair at the time. There's no indication of foul play. A Louisville man receives a 117-month prison sentence following a hearing in federal court at Bowling Green. Darryl Anthony Taylor was sentenced on marijuana and firearms charges for a December 2015 traffic stop. I'm Ed Huckleberry.
This is the Kentucky News Network.
Hello.
That'll be 34907. Sir, I can't take that, and that's only about $120 anyway.
But the Magic Man pays three times face value at Glasgow Coin and Jewelry. Watch this.
We can make that happen.
Top dollar guaranteed.
Not to be confused with Magic Mike.
BR Tire. We're always on call, and we answer the call. We know that's what keeps our loyal customers coming back season after season, year after year. With so many vining for your business, improving our service is not just a good practice, it's a necessity. From our easy-to-navigate website to our easy-to-deal-with service department, we work hard to make it easy for you to choose us. No one keeps you rolling like BR Tire on Lover's Lane in Bowling Green and West Main Street in Glasgow.
Nothing comes before coffee.
How can I help you, gentlemen?
That's why we're introducing a whole new line of espresso drinks from McCafe. Nothing comes before coffee.
How can I help you, gentlemen?
That's why we're introducing a whole new line of espresso drinks from McCafe.
Let's turn to local sports. High school basketball action from Monday night. Games heard here on WCLU. The Glasgow Scottie Boys down Allen County Scottsville, 48 to 45. And it was the Allen County Scottsville Lady Patriots defeating the Glasgow Lady Scotties, 57 to 26. Also last night, Bardstown Bethlehem down Caverna, 53 to 45. Coming up tonight in high school basketball, Glasgow hosts LaRue County at Scottie Gym. It's a girl-boy doubleheader. The girls play first at 5:30. Joe Myers, Larry Alexander, and Bruce Trabu will have the broadcasts of both games. Beginning at 5:20 tonight on 1490 WCLU and online at playwclu.com. Other girl-boy doubleheaders tonight, Barron County travels to Logan County. Allen County Scottsville visits Greenwood. Edmiston County entertains Medkeff County. Warren East goes to Russellville, and South Warren welcomes Warren Central. Boys' action tonight, Caverna goes to Butler County. Hart County hosts Nelson County. And Bowling Green's on the road at Mullenburg County. The girls' game tonight, Hart County plays at Campbellsville. And that's a check of local sports.
Weather from the WCLU Weather Center. Brought to you by McDonald's.
Your Glasgow and Monfort Vale McDonald's is now hiring.
Lessenberry Dewitt Center is Glasgow's only locally-owned hardware store, and that means a lot to me. Lessenberry's has been in business for over 100 years. I walk in the store, they know who I am, and I get the help that I need. For me, Lessenberry's is the easiest place for me to shop, simply because it's a local, family-owned business, and I feel comfortable when I'm there. And I'm glad there's still a place like that in Glasgow.
To move in on a gusty breeze this morning, the chillier temperatures in yesterday, most of us hovering near 60. I don't think we see 60 degrees come back for the next couple of days, but maybe by the end of the week. Clouds in, gusty winds this morning, I think mainly cloudy today. May actually see temperatures fall a few degrees into the low 40s. Overnight tonight will finally clear. High pressure will come on in, will fall back to the colder mid-20s. Clouds and sun on Wednesday, 44. 20s again Wednesday night. Thursday, mostly sunny and slightly milder into the low 50s. And then Friday, with more sun than clouds, will go upper 50s to near 60 degrees. I'm meteorologist Ray Stajic, a weather channel on WCLU, your home for local.
Yeah, Ray, still dropping. We're down at 40 degrees. We're fixing to hit the 30s. That's gonna be our next tick right there, as the cooler air is trickling in. We got 2/10 of an inch of rain yesterday, and the barometer this morning has dropped to 29.79. The winds got up to as high as 31 miles an hour last night. They've come to about 8 miles an hour blowing out of the southwest here this morning. 40 degrees. WCLU Weather brought to you by the folks who really want you to enjoy breakfast with them at McDonald's.
Hello, friends. Many, many times in my life, I've been to visit a funeral home to pay respects to an acquaintance or a family member of an acquaintance. At several of these times, someone has placed something in the hands of the deceased, everything from a Bible to a bridal to some smoking tobacco. The question is always stirred in my mind, why place that particular item there? I suppose the answer is that whatever was placed there was something they were known for using a lot, something that made a statement about their life. This thought occurs to me, what if someone put the thing that seemed most appropriate in our hands after we die? What would it be? A cigarette? Paradise? Deck of cards? A hunting rifle? A set of golf clubs? A rod and reel? Would it be a Bible? What kind of impression are you leaving others by the life you live? This is Danny Wyatt for the Refuge Church of Christ, and I want to invite you to come and worship God with us. Come this next Sunday morning. Good things are happening at Refuge. We want you to be a part of them. We want you to be a part of the congregation. We'll look for you Sunday morning.
I'm Roxanne Cloyde, also...
Why the name Fire Pit Spirits? Because your beverage of choice is meant to be enjoyed with good friends, celebrating life, happiness, or just the end of a hard week of work. And, as always, it's meant to be consumed responsibly. So, whatever you're celebrating, gather round your fire pit, because good times are made with the ones you choose to keep in your circle. Fire Pit Spirits. Best selection. Best service. Best friends.
You're Roxanne. Here we are at 7:32 this morning on WCLU. Coming up, we've got the...let's see, we have the annual Barron County Lincoln Day Dinner, sponsored by the Barron County Republican Party and the Barron County Republican Women's Club. It's coming up on the 10th day of February at 6:00 p.m. at the Cave City Convention Center. Tickets are $35 each. You can get them by calling 579-5458, or 670-9924, or at the Barron County Clerk's Office at 651-5200. Tickets must be purchased in advance, and remember that date, it's the 10th of February for the Lincoln Day Dinner. 7:33, Ralphie says, let's have a birthday party.
You have one hour.
TJ Regional Health offers a vast array of medical services in our community. The TJ Health Pavilion is home to over 35 family and specialty physicians, outpatient services center, the TJ Urgent Care, and the TJ Pavilion Pharmacy. The TJ Health Cave City Clinic is a walk-in medical care facility, providing care seven days a week with no appointment necessary. Stop by and visit one of our locations today.
...
All right, and on behalf of Ralphie's, let's tell you who all's celebrating birthdays today on this 23rd day of January. So far, we know that Bonnie Haynes, Dick Lee, Alisa DiFilippo, it's Maleka Grace. Maleka Grace has a last name, I know. Where did I put her last name? It's Russell. Maleka Grace Russell is having a birthday today. She's the one who's...who her nana and Pa McClellan love you to the moon and back a zillion times. All right, so there we have that wish for Maleka Grace. Here it is, the birthday today of Ms. Mary Poland, Sheila Williams, Dave Young, Jennifer Cox, Amy Dixon, Elizabeth King is 29, Brittany Reed with a birthday, Steve Goodman, Nelletta Ferkin, Charles Watkins. Charles, we sounded a...we woke up a rooster in your honor a few minutes ago. On your 70th birthday, Camilla Shive Velma Sowers with a birthday. And let's see, we also have Larry and Martha Davis with a wedding anniversary. 651-9149, 800-956-1023, online here from wcluradio.com. That would be a good way to get in touch with us here today. So let us know about the special events. We'll be sharing the good news.
If you find yourself in need of an attorney who's special...
Who will be the future face of Petigo Lessenberry? Through expert analysis, we've confirmed their potential. With intense training, we've prepared them for any occurrence. We've taken their strengths and made them stronger. Now it's time to see what they're made of. Presenting the future face of ISU Petigo Lessenberry Insurance.
Hello, I'm Jared Persley.
And I'm Daniel Byrd.
And we're more than prepared to serve you here at ISU Petigo Lessenberry Insurance.
Growing with a proud community since 1902.
Growth begins with an idea. At The People's Bank, that idea is to give you the banking service you deserve. We carry out that idea in everything we do. In fact, it's become our motto, working for you. As that idea continues to grow, let us work for you at our new location, 1300 West Main Street, opening this summer. Let us be the place where your ideas begin, where you get the banking you deserve. Come grow with us, The People's Bank, working for you.
At PBI Bank, we pride ourselves on providing great customer service with a hometown field. We invite you to come in and meet our friendly staff who can help you apply for a mortgage, apply for an ag loan, open an account, or help with any other banking service. Trust PBI Bank to be your banking partner for personal or business accounts. Come visit or call us today. We are a Kentucky-based community bank, serving the Commonwealth for more than a century. Stop in or visit online at pbibank.com to learn more about what we can offer you.
Sam Terry will be the speaker for the Barron County Historical Society's meeting on Thursday at 6 o'clock at the Mary Wood Wildin Library. The subject will be legendary locals, Barron County Unions Everyone Should Know. The Sneed Family of Glasgow will sing at the Pleasant Grove Baptist Church on a Saturday at 6 o'clock. The church is located on Hydra Road in Smith's Grove. Also, South Green Elementary Family Resource Center Advisory Council will meet on Tuesday, January 30th, at 2:45 at South Green Elementary. The annual Barron County Lincoln Day Dinner, sponsored by the Barron County Republican Party and the Barron County Republican Women's Club, will be on February 10th at 6 o'clock at the Cave City Convention Center. Tickets are $35 each and may be purchased by calling 579-5458, or 670-9924, or the Barron County Clerk's Office at 270-651-5200. Tickets must be purchased in advance. Do you have a church or community event coming up? We would like to know at 270-651-9149, or 1-800-956-1023. Log on to the website, wcluradio.com. I'm Jason Thomas with today's Churchill Community Calendar on WCLU.
Thank you, Jason. We're at 7:38 now, and we have a temperature reading of 40 degrees. Now, I think we're gonna go ahead and jump over the threshold and get into some tidbit news while we're here this morning. If I can get the tidbit singers to sing.
From the north, south, east, west, N-E-W-S, here's the latest news.
From around the world and up the street, and all points in between, it's time for... It's time for doing a little tidbit news. Mark's going to join me here today.
That's right, good morning.
As a set of ears right there to kind of keep me on track, all right?
Well, I don't know, maybe distract you a little bit.
Well, it shouldn't be too bad. Let's see, I, this story, well, let me, let me do it this way, okay?
A little apprehensive on this one, huh?
Well, no, it's just I want to get it in the right order, because I might actually have a theme song here.
Oh, okay, okay.
We'll see. All right, first of all, here is this story out of Hawaii. Hawaii Governor David Iggy, if I'm saying that right.
Uh, it sounds like it would be right.
Uh, you know, Iggy is, I mean, it's in Hawaii, you know, the John Prine song, "Let's Talk Dirty in Hawaii."
I don't know that one.
Okay, all right, anyway, it could be David Iggy.
Well, I know Ziggy.
Yeah.
Ziggy, but I think he's Jamaican.
Yeah. Well, anyway, David says that he and his team took so long to post a message to the social media about the recent missile alert being a false alarm because he didn't know his Twitter username and password.
Oh, my.
This is the governor. He says, yeah, I want to cancel that. I don't want y'all to be scared. I'll give out a tweet, but he couldn't remember, he couldn't remember his username and password.
Well, you know, I feel his pain, but I'm not sure that I'd be relying necessarily on Twitter for the national safety of an entire state.
The governor told reporters yesterday that he now has them in his cellphone.
Well, that's good to know.
And he, he says he can now use social media without waiting for his staff. The governor was asked by his Twitter, why his Twitter account relayed a Hawaii emergency management tweet about the false alarm at eight-twenty-four, even though Iggy learned about it fifteen minutes earlier at eight-oh-nine. You know, what was we had in the archives like the day before yesterday? It's a, hey, we're going to do something this month, sometime this month. It doesn't matter when, it's just this month.
Right.
So anyway, Governor Iggy.
Well, I don't know about you, but my passwords, if you had to remember all the passwords that I have to remember, I don't know how anybody does it, but I'm terrible. I can't, you know, like I've told you before, I can't find my shoes in the mornings, so my passwords are a mess.
You know, and now they got this deal where you got to change it every so often.
Well, yeah, you know, especially at workplaces, you know, a lot of, where I worked at Donnelly's out there, you have to change it about every sixty days, I believe it was. And, you know, it's got to be different, too.
Yeah.
So you can't be, you know, can't repeat or whatever, but.
All right. So here we go. How about a little theme music over here? Let me find my theme music right here.
I was hoping to get the luau music there.
Luau, well, I don't have any of that. You know, I get John Prine, maybe.
Useless tidbit research, useless tidbit research. When you look at all the facts that don't mean jack, it's useless tidbit research.
Yeah, we got a couple of pieces of research right here that may or not be useful.
All right.
Story number one, we know some people are left-handed and others are right-handed, but what about other species? Well, not only do other creatures have a preference for one side or the other, but those preferences seem to be linked to gender.
Okay.
For instance, a study from Queen's University in Belfast shows that female cats are more likely to be right pawed than males.
Oh, my.
Researchers looked at forty-four cats and found that there was a gender difference when it came to the animals using their right paw over their left paw.
So cats are more right-handed than left?
That's what it says. Right pawed, right-footed, or right something.
So is that like right rear or right?
Well, I don't know. It's, they're just going based on side to side.
I guess that counts as a leg.
The study found the majority of the cats showed a paw preference when reaching for food, walking down the stairs, or stepping over objects, but that the preference of the paw was consistent in most of their tasks.
Well, I can tell you, we had a female cat that passed away, and a sad story, but I can guarantee you, it was left pawed, because that was the one I got tagged by on a regular basis.
Yeah, well, you know, it's, that was one of those, you know, rare, rare, specific changes and things.
Yeah, it's one of them things, you know, the cats, they're kind of, they can hit you like five times before you even know it.
Yeah. And here's some more useless research.
Okay.
Think about this. A twenty-four-year-old Wyoming woman who claimed that she shoplifted from Walmart as part of her research for a college term paper on kleptomania has pleaded guilty to two counts of felony shoplifting.
You know, you have to stop and ask yourself at some point, what are these people really thinking?
Lydia Marie Cormany also pleaded guilty in, in January the third in District Court to two counts of misdemeanor shoplifting. As a part of the plea agreement, prosecutors will recommend that she serve a suspended three to six-year sentence on the felonies with three years of supervised probation.
Wow.
And suspended a hundred-and-eighty-day jail sentences on the misdemeanors with six months of probation, all concurrent.
Well, I guess they're going to do a study on recidivism now, which is, what do they say, the, the study of going back to jail. So that's a pretty lenient sentence, actually.
Well, you know, it says here that she might have to pay restitution, or, I mean, she also must pay restitution.
Felony shoplifting, wonder what constitutes that.
I don't know. It's a research, it's a term paper. I want to read that paper.
Yeah, I wonder what she, yeah, what were her findings? Would you go to jail if you get?
Right now, she's going to flunk the class, I think.
Oh, wow, that's, hmm.
So that's the useless tidbit research that I have here. I'm just double-checking, making sure, because I don't want to-
Overlooking the uselessness.
Yeah, I don't know, you know, I, I've got some other story. I'll save some of this for tomorrow, because it's fairly intriguing, but there's nothing to link it together, like the perils of useless tidbit research.
I was going to say, you know, it seems like a lot of our stories seem to come out of Hawaii and the islands and Alaska and up in that region. I wonder if there's something in the water over there.
I don't know.
Besides the tsunami.
Angela says she's back.
Oh, she's back.
I told you we'd have to do it by ourselves, but she's back. So anyway, just, you want to say anything about anything we've been doing?
She's only partially back.
That's all right. Anyway, we've been, the useless, whether she has a right pawed cat or not.
There she is.
All right, there she is, okay. Are you there?
Morning, Angela.
I'm here, good morning.
Okay, well, anyway, we're just wrapping up, we were actually wrapping up tidbit, we didn't know you'd be back.
I mean, there's this thing called text messaging.
Yeah, well, there is.
I sent you a message.
Well, we're a little out of order, but we're on there.
Yeah, but I'm right pawed.
I tell you right now, look, I walk out of the station, it all falls apart.
Yeah, well, you just got to tell us, say, hey, I'll be back.
I did tell you via text.
You did? Via text?
It was a text message, yeah.
Let me get, here, let me get this.
Mark even replied.
He did, huh? Well.
I gave a ha-ha, you know?
Yeah, Mark's got my back just way on back.
Yeah. I don't see it.
Yeah, I don't either.
Did you get the ha-ha? You know, the little tap backs they do now, I don't know, maybe I'm just out of whack.
Okay, so, so the thing is, you're back because we've got a video.
I have one of the coolest things I've ever seen in my life.
Okay, well, let's, let's tell us about it.
So check this out, so, you know, you see people all the time out walking their dogs.
Uh-huh.
See, you know, videos on TV, you know, people walking a cat every now and then.
Yeah.
I saw a kid walking a goat.
Walking a goat?
A goat.
How did that go?
Now, this goat's name is Bert, and I really believe he has developed a bond with this goat.
Angela, I actually have-
The goat seems happy.
Actually have the video of the walking goat.
Show, I mean, folks, brace yourselves. This is like the coolest, cutest thing in the entire world. Goats are cool again. Check it out, this is Caden McFarlane and Bert the Goat.
Goats are cool again, you say?
This is actually the goat that was featured in this year's Glasgow Rotary Auction.
All right.
Y'all thought the goat was a joke? Uh-uh.
Service above self goat.
There you go, and I know his, his mother, Jamie McFarlane, was the winner of the bid.
Okay.
I couldn't believe Jamie bid on a goat, but anyway, but I can see now why.
Well, I'm looking at a picture here on our Facebook feed and on the EPB Channel Six, this goat out for a stroll.
I'm telling you.
Thought the goat was a joke. What a, what a line.
The goat is, no, I'm telling you. I'm telling you, this goat will be a chick mag-
Hit it again.
This goat will be a chick magnet.
Well, you know, I, you know.
Is it one of those fainting goats, you know, that fall down when you like open an umbrella or whatever?
I mean, he didn't tell me he screamed at and it fell. I mean, it looks just like a little, I don't know, it's like a little goat goat, not a fainting goat.
Well, she's, she's obviously going to be a chick maggot, because all the chicks are going to, not chick maggot, chick magnet. It's chick magnet, because all the girls are going to look at this thing and say, what is that?
They're, oh, let me, oh, it's so cute.
What is that?
Exactly, oh, it's so cute, let me see your goats, I'm telling you.
A chick magnet.
Chick magnet, there, there will be a run for goats in Glasgow for teenage boys.
So, so get your goat.
I'm saying.
Yeah, the goat is not a joke, folks.
Hmm, I'm going to, I'm going to put these pictures on Facebook, tell you.
Well, you know, so the goats are cool.
Hashtag goats are cool.
Well, I don't think you have to yell at them, like you said, scream at them. Like, you know, you seen these fainting goats on there, Henry?
I have, yes.
Okay, yeah, so they just like, you open an umbrella and they just fall over, it's like a reaction.
I just don't go around screaming at goats.
Folks, if you don't believe me, look it up on YouTube.
I try to treat animals with love.
Well, when, when you say the goats are cool again, the, I'll show my age here, which is not something I can hide, but there was an episode of the Andy Griffith Show where down at the jail, they had a goat, and the goat somehow got into the dynamite and ate all kinds of dynamite at the jail. And so Barney was running around scared to death the goat was going to explode.
So he had a bloated goat.
Oh, my Lord.
That's right, and so that, so then all of a sudden, they weren't cool for a while, and now they're back to being cool.
It's about time.
All right.
Again, folks, definitely goats are cool. Again, I'll put these pictures on Facebook.
Yeah, put those on there, that's, that's, that's going to be cool. The chick magnet goat.
Yeah, way better than those dumb cat videos.
Yeah, I got you. Well, there you go, boy, you just stepped on some toes, for sure.
And don't be calling up here telling me you love cat videos.
Here I was worried about having this right paw, left paw story.
Well, I wonder, yeah, I was going to think, you know, what if the goat was right pawed? I wonder if that's a-
Here's what's up, if somebody doesn't like me anymore because of a cat video comment, they were looking for a reason anyway.
Yeah, that's right, you know, the goat needs to chew the rope into it, he's done.
Yeah, we're not encouraging you, we're not encouraging anybody to go by and scream at this goat, by the way.
No.
Be nice to the goat.
If you do, blame it on Mark.
That's right, the owner might faint. That's tidbit news for today, and I guess I'll officially play the outro to wrap it up.
Useless tidbit research, useless tidbit research. When you look at all the facts that don't mean jack, it's useless tidbit research.
We'll have more tomorrow.
At the People's Bank in Glasgow, we believe that people still like the friendly atmosphere of a community bank. A bank where you're more than just a number. You get one-on-one personal service. A bank where your money is reinvested in the community, and decisions, well, they're all made locally. The People's Bank gives you everything you'd expect in a bank, including online and mobile banking. Get the banking you deserve. Located at six-oh-five-C on the Happy Valley Road in Glasgow, the People's Bank, working for you. Member FDIC, equal housing lender.
Have you suffered a loss? Are you prepared to deal with the-
Hi, I'm Fred Parrish here at Parrish Carpet in Glasgow, Kentucky. My parents started this business over fifty years ago, so we know flooring here at Parrish Carpet. We have a large showroom and a big selection in stock. We do custom binding and we do free estimates. We've served a lot of people in the fifty-plus years, and we'd like to thank each and every one of you, so if you have a flooring need, come see us at Parrish Carpet.
Growth begins with an idea. At the People's Bank, that idea is to give you the banking service you deserve. We carry out that idea in everything we do. In fact, it's become our motto, working for you. As that idea continues to grow, let us work for you at our new location, thirteen-hundred West Main Street, opening this summer. Let us be the place where your ideas begin, where you get the banking you deserve. Come grow with us, the People's Bank, working for you.
Six-twenty-one West Main Street. Bobby Lee Hurt at Hurt Auto Sales is up and atum and ready to roll in your behalf, because he knows that you need to roll in something dependable. How are you, Bobby Lee?
Doing well, it's morning, Henry. It's a great day, sun's out, shining, makes, should make everybody want to get outside.
Yeah. Got anything you can haul a goat in up there?
We most certainly do, Henry. I've got some trucks, you can, you can haul a herd of goats.
Okay, all right, well, somebody's to check that out, for sure. You see, when we say you've got something for everybody, we're not kidding.
That's right, goat haulers, cat haulers, whatever you want to do, you know?
Goat haulers? I thought maybe that was a town in Wayne County, Goat Holler.
Well, that's, that's, that's a, that's a community, yeah.
Okay, got you, got you. So what's going on on the lot at Hurt Auto Sales?
Henry, we just got in, an '08 Honda Pilot, has a third-row seat, sharp-looking ride, local trade-in, and we've got it priced for just ninety-nine-hundred dollars.
A deceptive amount of room in that thing.
Lots of room. Put those seats down and, you know, well, you can haul your goats.
That's right, that's right. One of them could ride up with you.
Yeah, that's right. And they can use the left paw, right paw, whatever they want to do.
That's right.
Okay. Then we got an '08 Chevy truck, one-half ton, four-by-four, really nice-looking truck, got a lift kit on it, you know, which a lot of, a lot of folks like.
Yeah. Now, explain what a lift kit does.
It, it actually sets a truck up about, this one sets it up six inches.
Oh, my goodness.
And that way you can put bigger tires and bigger wheels on it, which it does help, you know?
It sounds like you know what you're talking about.
It, it looks like a small monster truck.
Okay, I got you, I got you.
And, and we've got it priced for ninety-nine-hundred as well.
Okay. Keep going, you're doing so good.
Yeah, yeah. Got an '04 Dodge truck, one-half ton, four-door, it's two-wheel drive, and we've got a bargain price on it just for sixty-nine-hundred dollars.
My goodness, that's, you can get a truck for not a lot of moolah, for sure.
That's for sure. And last but not least, you don't want to spend a lot of money on a good dependable car.